Okay, so I really don't have anything formal to present, but just want to talk in like general terms of, you know, peaking power versus baseload. I think Glenn and Jeff wanted to maybe talk about the GRDA extension that's going to be coming here in the next couple of months as well. So all right now, you guys have a two, I'm sorry, a three megawatt GRDA allocation, which represents about sixty percent, sixty-one percent of your annual energy needs. And when we were looking at an extension to blend in with what we were looking in the future with community solar and other resources, we were going to ratchet that down to about two megawatts. So two megawatt allocation would represent about forty percent of your annual energy needs, and that's your seven by twenty-four baseload energy needs. So that's something you're consuming all the, all the time. And then you all have a little bit of federal hydro, which represents about five percent. A little bit of federal hydro again with SPA represents about one percent. Then you have a little piece of Buckeye Wind that runs through twenty thirty-three, that represents about five percent. And then Marshall Wind, which represents about eleven percent and goes through twenty thirty-six. So really, what we talked about probably two or three years ago, when we started looking at solar was, you know, we were trying to latch on to a large scale solar project for our members, and we found one. That's the one that's west of Wichita, about seventy miles in Pratt County. And then the other option we tried to roll out for our members was community solar. And there's pros and cons to both. They both have a place. You guys have community solar, so you know what it's like, the pros and cons of it. But the shot clock is kind of ticking on the large scale solar. About two and a half weeks, about the end of the year, we committed to the developer to have agreements. Right now, we have probably about twenty agreements back from the cities. We hope to have another ten back by the end of next week. It'll total about thirty-three, thirty-four cities will be in this project, and it'll account for about eighty megawatts of the two hundred megawatt project. So they feel pretty good about getting another, I think there's about seventy-five to ninety left, and they feel pretty good about the third subscriber, so they think that project's gonna go. They're gonna have all the materials purchased, and it's gonna be on time for like a late twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-seven timeframe, which fits in nicely into your portfolio as GRDA is expiring in April of twenty twenty-six. And then we'll ratchet, or the intention is to ratchet that down because you probably are a little heavy baseload. And that's something that's not unique to the city of Baldwin. We have several EMP one members and then EMP three members, EMP two members, and maybe have a little bit too much baseload. But it's not a bad thing. It just means that you can't participate in the SPP integrated marketplace all the time, which today, the integrated marketplace is very good. Natural gas is very low. But as more coal retires, as AI data centers, all this load growth is starting to happen, market prices are generally going to tend to go upwards. So that's what we're kind of seeing. So to have fifteen to twenty percent of your portfolio exposed to the market is probably a good thing because you guys have generation to back it up. You've got that generation to back it up. So then it's really just a matter of, do you want more community solar and what that entails? Or do you want to participate in a large scale? There's really no wrong answer. It's just a matter of personal preference at that point. So that's kind of all I, all I really have.
So what do you see the benefits of Pratt versus community solar and vice versa?
Well, the only, the only thing I really have in front of me is the, is the Pratt numbers. I really don't have any other numbers to compare to. You're saying if all things were equal?
Yeah.
All things were equal, okay.
If all things were equal.
So if all things were, were equal, and you're talking about a community solar PPA or community solar buy it out from the get-go?
Buy it out from the get-go.
Buy it out from the get-go, okay. So to be honest with you, we haven't had very many communities that have done that yet. So we're just on the cusp of having some folks that are thinking about either bonding it all or maybe throwing a half million or a million dollars of cash at the project and then buying it, you know, buying it down essentially. The cons with that is that these facilities haven't been around long enough for us to kind of really calculate the O and M. I don't know what the lifespan of an inverter is or a solar panel. It comes with a manufacturer's warranty, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty years on some of these, some of these parts and things. So that would be the downside is that you bonded, you know, say, seven million dollars, eight million dollars, nine, whatever the price is for twenty, twenty-five years, and then you have, things go wrong. So you're paying the debt service and you're not getting the energy. With the large scale solar, it's just a pay-as-you-go. It's just a PPA, just like you guys have with Buckeye Wind or GRDA, where you just pay as you go. There's no capital upfront that you have to come up with. If the facility is down for an extended period of time, then you don't, you don't pay for the energy because of the facility is not producing, and you're not out any debt service. So those are kind of the main differences between kind of owning versus, you know, leasing, if you will. But if, if the drivers are to have more community solar in Baldwin City, then, you know, building, you know, participating in something in Pratt County isn't going to duplicate that. So it just really kind of depends what your, what your drivers are, so.
Would there be a benefit on community solar over the Pratt project for, one, transmission? And two, having it on our side of the meter versus Evergy side to contract in-house?
Yeah, so the, there is some mystique about if you have it, and this was what solar developers were telling our members five, ten years ago, is that if you had it behind your meter, it would somehow lower your peak and then it'd lower your transmission charges. That's not really truthful. It just like, it'd just be like if you had a generator that you guys ran twenty-four hours a day for two months, you still have load that you're serving. So you'd have to add, I'm sorry, you'd have to add your generation back in. Same thing with a solar project. You'd have to add that generation back in, which doesn't lower your transmission charges. So the transmission charges really would be neutral on, on both. But what you would have is, because your transmission charges are based off of your load, your load wouldn't change. But what you would have is you'd have, with the community, is you'd have something in your backyard to where you wouldn't have to put in for a transmission request. And so in order to get the, the firm power delivered from Pratt to the city of Baldwin, KME would put in for a transmission request on, on behalf of all the participants. And that would be like a three or four hundred dollar one-time nominal charge that we would put in to get that firm transmission. With that firm transmission, it gives you the ability to hedge the price differential between where Buckeye is in, I'm sorry, where this Nanoscol Flat Solar is injecting and where your load is. The fact that it's in central southern Kansas, it should be within a couple of dollars of where your load settles. So that's really minute when you're looking at a thirty-year project. And KME and Glenn and Jeff can attest to this. We've been pretty good at managing the congestion risk with our transmission congestion rights that we get. So that, there would be, so with a community solar, you wouldn't have to put in for an SPP long-term transmission request because it's behind the meter. You wouldn't have any essentially two-dollar, three-dollar congestion risk that, that we would manage, mitigate it through the large scale solar, but it'd be a non-factor in your community because it would be behind the meter, so.
I have one more question.
Yep, sure.
Wouldn't there also be a benefit to us if, if all, all things considered the same as far as pricing? Wouldn't there still be a benefit of us, because if all things were considered the same, then our bond would only be for twenty years versus a PPA that's thirty years with potential that our community solar lasts twice as long as our bond does?
And there is that potential, again, without seeing what the price is. If the price was thirty percent more, right, over the twenty years, and then, then you just have, I just have to see the numbers to see if it made sense. But if it were truly, you know, the same price and levelized cost of energy over the thirty years, then I, I just don't have all the information to make that type of a decision.
Yeah, working off hypotheticals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You stole my question. But no, I, I think, is it fair to say though, then, when you're doing a comparison, when we do have the prices, if we do, you know, total cost of ownership out to the length of whatever the PPA is going to be? If it's a thirty-year Pratt or thirty-five-year Pratt, and we understand what our bottom price is, we understand what O and M is, and, you know, then you map that out, it might, it'll be more expensive the first twenty years possibly, but then you map that out to the next ten, thirty or thirty-five. Kind of get a lifespan of that, what's more economical. Is that a fair way to look at it?
It is. Like I had mentioned earlier, the only thing that we don't have a really good handle on is the O and M of that. So when you start looking at the operation and maintenance of it, you know, you got equipment failure, you get things that you've got to do on an annual basis. We don't really have a, I don't have a good number for it. I've heard initially it was five to six dollars a megawatt hour, and then I heard it was more like ten to fifteen dollars a megawatt hour. So it's, those are the unknowns that we're just not really in that space. But, but yes, if that was the objective is to do the debt service and then own it, you know, after the end of the twenty years, you essentially own it, then you have, you know, a lot cheaper energy than you went through the PPA, absolutely.
Don't we have pricing on O and M for a, what is it, thirty-year?
Yeah, I think there's, there's products out there that you can purchase that covers the O and M for you, okay?
Like same companies that are managing the PPA solar, or they can manage yours, and they'll just apparently quote you a fixed price for, for, for over the year. So it should take out some of that.
Unknown.
Unknown and, and risk, which I think would be important.
Sure.
I think to me, the other thing is, you know, fully understanding, you know, and we've talked about this in, you know, budget and finance, and, and you know, want to get it out here for everybody, is, is understanding the base power needs and, and what solar can and can't do for you, and how you would manage your mix of energy sources to make sure that you had enough, enough base power. So I guess the question is, you just completely go to zero on GRDA, or do you need one, or do you need two? So, so can you talk a little about the risks of, of that?
Yeah. So when we, when we evaluated GRDA, we kind of looked at, some of the members had probably had a little too much, some of them had not enough. So we went back to GRDA and the extension. And what, what we did was we targeted about a third of the city's annual, just as, just as a target to say, okay, on this next iteration, what would thirty-three percent like? For you guys, it might be one point seven five, somewhere around there, might be thirty-three percent. Two, two megawatts equates to about forty percent of your, which is still right in that bandwidth of a really good number. Sixty, sixty-one percent is probably a little too heavy, considering all the other resources that the city of Baldwin has. We have some cities that have a three-megawatt allocation very similar in size, and they say, Neil, we've got all these resources too, but we, we know that we may have a little potential load growth. We want to stay with three. We have some that have a three-megawatt allocation, say, Neil, we're going to go down to one. We're going to take sixty percent market exposure, and we're going to fire up our generation whenever. That's a little too, that's a little too risky, in, in my opinion. But we're just consultants, so if the city wants to take that on.
That's, that's the point you just made, is it's market exposure.
It is.
Anything you don't do under contract, you're then exposed to the daily market.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's the risk.
So that's a little bit on the extreme, but two is a really good number, and that's going to provide, that's the, that's the foundation of your house. So that's going to, that's going to provide the, the foundation for it. And then you just stack these other resources that you guys have that are more intermediate, more, more peaking resources on top of it. But forty percent is a really reasonable number. What that does is that lowers your seven by twenty-four and gives you the opportunity to purchase more off-peak power, which off-peak power is all the wind power that gets generated that, you know, sometimes they have to curtail the wind because there's so much wind in the SPP footprint and not enough load. So, and then prices go negative. So there's, there's a balance though of, you don't want to have the lowest price because lowest price means you're probably taking on the most risk. You don't want to have the highest price because that means that you probably covered yourself up too much. So you, you want to have that blend of resources, which you guys have a really nice blend of resources, different type of products expiring at different terms. So if you were to lock in the Grand River Dam Authority through twenty fifty-one, it's a twenty-five-year extension, cost-based system product. And then either did community solar, large-scale solar, and then you've got your WAPA, which goes through twenty fifty-four. SPA goes through twenty thirty-four. Marshall goes through twenty thirty-six. I mean, you've got a really nice portfolio, sustainable portfolio for quite some time, and that's really what you want. You don't want to be going back to the drawing board every four or five years saying, okay, what's our budget now? Because we've got to introduce this new, you know, multi-million dollar resource, which we don't know anything about into our portfolio. You, you've got stability here. So then it's just kind of, how do we fill in the edges? Your, your GRDA is your foundation, and then how do we build the walls and the roof? And whether you do community solar or large-scale solar, it's really, at the end of the day, that's not going to be the driver of your, of your long-term power supply wholesale cost. It's going to be your GRDA is going to make up the lion's share of it, and of course, what the market does. What the market does. But, you know, the market is, is, is good. But again, you've got a lot of retirement, and you've got a lot of growth coming on that hasn't hit the market yet. So when we go out for bids to Evergy, to NextTerra Energy Marketing, to TEA, all these marketing and, and companies, the energy prices are double and triple what the market is. So for them to take the risk of a seven, ten-year fixed energy deal, it's double and triple of what the current spot market is just because of the perceived load growth in AI data centers, EVs. Everything is putting a strain on the electrical system.
So hypothetically, if we were to take two megawatts of GRDA or one megawatt, how would that correlate over to what you would recommend for our solar megawatt? Whether it's community or large-scale?
I'd have to.
We've talked about this a lot, if you can't tell.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could.
Before you answer that, I know you're thinking about it.
Yeah.
Can you describe?
Our committee meetings go.
Yes. We've had this discussion, but I, I think it's important to everybody here, and you're refreshing.
Casey actually stole my question, so.
So explain if we don't have enough base power, when base power is needed, when we'd have to go to the market? So can you explain when that happens and why you'd have to go to the market? Is it when solar's not working? It's at night? It's cloudy? So, so what's that risk in, you don't have enough base, and here's what's going to have to happen if these other things happen?
Yeah. So what, what are your, I don't have your, what are your minimum loads, Jeff?
Our minimum, very, really minimum is like two and a half.
Two and a half, and then like in the summer and then, then the winter, what would it be like, three, three and a half, somewhere around there?
Yeah, when getting colder weather, we're looking at four and a half to six.
Okay, so, so that would be a situation where, God forbid, another winter stormy, which you still have nightmares from that event back in twenty twenty-one. But when prices go extreme, you want to have coverage for all of your, all of your hours. That isn't realistic, just because when you build a portfolio, you don't want to cover up everything unless you're a city that doesn't have any generation and you're under like a Evergy load-following GFR where they cover everything. Those are generally higher, so you pay, you know, if your wholesale costs are five and a half cents, you might pay eight or nine cents for that year-round to have that type of coverage. That's a more expensive product. But in, in, Jeff gave me those, those load numbers. So if you get into a winter, a December, January, February, where you've only got one megawatt of GRDA, but your minimums are four and a half or five, it's middle of the night, there's no, there's no solar being produced. So then you guys might be forty, fifty, sixty percent exposed during those off-peak hours. So that's when it becomes really risky. I would say ninety-eight percent of the time, it, it's a good thing because the market should perform and should do. It's those events, those things out of your control, where, or geopolitical things that happen overseas, you know, we get in a war. Then prices spike up, and then you're like, oh, man, we're exposed. And then by, by then, the markets already reacted. And so when you go to the market and you go to Evergy or NextTerra and say, hey, give me some fixed energy prices, they're like, it's a hundred and seventy dollars for.
That's a great explanation. So is it fair to say then, though, that the base power is from PPAs that have fossil fuel and can deliver it at any time? And it's not wind or solar or hydro?
Correct. They have a, GRDA has a blended system product, and it's going to be.
Guaranteed twenty-four seven.
Guaranteed twenty-four seven.
That's the difference.
Guaranteed twenty-four seven, yep.
And that's the only we have, right, is GRDA is the only?
Yeah, it's the only base. Can you explain the, the blend for GRDA once, sir?
Yeah, so they have, right now, they have probably fifteen or twenty percent coal. They have some hydro, and they have wind and solar, and then they have probably, they're probably ramping up to be fifty-five, sixty percent natural gas. That's really the only thing that you can really build in the United States right now that is reliable is natural gas, either simple cycle or combined cycle. So they kind of got caught during winter stormy with their pants down on how much gas, natural gas they had hedged. We went back to them after that as a customer and said, okay, what do you guys have in place going forward that is gonna make us feel better to do a long-term agreement? And they came back to us, and, and it was a pretty, pretty, and I don't have, I don't think I have it with me, but basically, they, they found a consultant that would manage their gas hedging strategy. And so we, we feel much better going into another winter stormy event with how much natural gas GRDA has hedged. As you get closer to the prompt month, they have anywhere from sixty, seventy, eighty percent hedged in natural gas, which is a good thing. And before that, then maybe a hell of a fifteen or twenty percent hedged, so.
So their, their, the majority of their power, though, is being generated by natural gas, and then it looks like they got about twenty percent from what is called the market, which really, is that, is that natural gas also?
It's a mixture of everything. Yeah, it's, it's just a mixture of everything.
Yeah, so what, my point is by more than half of their power is coming from natural gas, which you just referred to as this, which, which is the volatile part.
If you don't hedge it, absolutely.
Yeah.
If you don't hedge it, because it's just going to float with the market. But if you have a strategy to lock it in, like what we're doing at Dogwood, Glenn, is we're, and you're not a part of that project, but we have a combined cycle plan that Gard, the city of Gardner is invested in. We went, Evergy is actually the operator of that thing, and they're a part owner. And we said, look, we're going to another winter, let's, let's hedge twenty-five, thirty percent of this with natural gas. Natural gas is really cheap right now. But so we're hedging, which is not a lot, but it's at least it's something if natural gas blows out. GRDA is hedging anywhere from seventy to ninety percent of where spot gas can go. So if it goes, if it's at four dollars today, which it's trading around four dollars probably for the winter, and it goes to a hundred, that you're not exposed to the hundred, you're exposed to the.
I mean, there's some, somebody's paying for, you're, you're basically buying ahead and storing it.
Correct.
And that's not free. I'm sure there's a cost associated with that hedge.
Well, you're just, you're just going out in the, in the market and just saying, my floor is two dollars. The spot market is two dollars. I, I know what that is. Today, I'm wanting to pay a premium before, knowing that I've got levelized cost at four, which is more than market. But if you don't, then the ceiling can go to infinity.
You're paying more than market for the hedge. Gotcha.
Probably.
Yeah, you always have to. But in the back to your point about the winter storm, though, and not to beat that into the ground, but the way we hedged or, or didn't get harmed like other people, we ran our engines. I mean, that was, we ran our diesel engines for that week. So we avoided the worst of, of the, so that, that's our protection against, because whether you hedge this or not, you're, you're exposed to natural gas, and that's the volatile piece. It's not the wind and.
Correct.
Solar, which is pretty much locked in for whatever that contract is, so.
But, but the wind and the solar, though, typically, like all the wind turbines froze up. Solar was nowhere around because everything was covered.
Right, but, but those, those peak hours, as you're talking about, are typically almost always during the day and not night, right? I mean, so what you're doing is looking for a product that will cover the peak during that, that time when everything's gone haywire, but that's usually during the day. So typically at night, and like you said, you've seen negative power. So I guess the question is, are you better off locking in a GRDA product, which also has a PCA built in?
That's what I was gonna bring up.
Because it's not really a fixed price. I mean, it, it looks like a fixed price, but it actually isn't because it does have a PCA, which they did pass through to us, and every member paid for that. So it's not, so it floats because GRDA is not going to lose money on any kilowatt they ever sell. They're not going out of business anytime soon. So I guess, what is the advantage of having GRDA at whatever hedging price or whatever versus just straight market, which is pretty close to what they're, without the hedging?
And if you guys are prepared to run your generation, then I would do what some of the cities are doing. Just go forty, fifty, sixty percent exposed to the market.
That's what we're, that's what we're, yeah.
So back to my question.
I thought he answered your question.
It was.
Not really.
It was your question.
If you have another question, say you have another question.
I don't have another question. I didn't get my question answered because Scott jumped in. If we were to go down to one megawatt of GRDA, what then would you guys recommend on the solar side to cover that?
That's.
Because that's, right, I mean, that's what we're saying is, we're going to open ourselves up to fifty, sixty percent on market.
Yeah.
Potentially, if we did that, correct?
Without additional solar or even with additional solar?
He's asking.
If we take GRDA from three to one.
Right, and don't do anything else.
Well, either way, we're, yeah, yeah, we're opening ourselves up to fifty, sixty percent.
You would need, you would need, so, so GRDA is our, is our only baseload, correct?
That's it.
So you would need to somehow guarantee, whether that be a combination of running your own generators or how much your additional solar could be produced in, let's say, a winter stormy type situation. So let's say if you had, and I don't know, these things track the sun, the new ones do, so I don't know how that, that would make a difference. But if you have a five-megawatt system, for example, would you even get two megawatts during that type of a situation?
We're, we're running our engines. We're not, we're not dependent on solar.
In that.
You're running, you're running your.
Well, because the, what he said is the solar was covered with snow during Yuri, so they weren't producing anything. But they were also.
You're buying off the market too.
No.
Right, well, but the market's volatile, I'll give you that.
So your decision point is buy to the market or run your own because we're cheaper than the market?
Right. I guess.
Depending on, if that, you could monitor that, you know what your costs are to, to run.
So the real question is, is would, would three megawatts of GRDA extended the contract another thirty years put us in a better position of, in those rare circumstances, running our own engines?
Say that again.
Would running our, in these rare circumstances, Yuri is a once-in-a-lifetime storm, but, you know, you get some smaller ones that come and go here, you know, every few winters. But in these rare circumstances, is it, are you better off over thirty years guaranteeing an inflated rate or running your engines once every three years at X amount of a higher rate than it would be to have had GRDA locked in?
Well, during Yuri, we ran our engines anyways.
And how much did we spend per megawatt hour?
Point is, GRDA is a base load product, but it is not.
It's because of the PCA.
Yes, I mean, it's going to track.
But to, to your point, you know, in a, I, I think it's worth mentioning, but if I understand you correctly, GRDA has so much buying power that they're able to hedge, hedge that, so if it goes from two to four, we would never even be paying. They're like, you hear the horror stories from Texas about what their gas bills were, et cetera. We would never, we would be protected that because GRDA is such a big company that they've.
Correct.
You know, so, so that's, that's more your hedge. So it's not like they'd be passing on fifty dollars a megawatt hour to you because that just wouldn't happen.
Yeah, the worst that it got.
Am I hearing that right?
Yeah, I mean, if we, I don't know, I didn't.
Yeah. I mean, if we, I don't know. I didn't come prepared. I'm sorry. I probably should have more GRDA stuff. But if you look at a chart of GRDA the last twenty years, it's been anywhere between forty and fifty dollars. Uh, and that comes with capacity. Uh, they're projected to these next five years to be sub fifty dollars. Because, um, their, their generation fleet and their gas hedging strategy, that's just kind of where they're at. Because they're looking four, five, five years out on the gas hedging strategy. So that's where, that's the indication that we got from them, the estimates that we got from them. So when you look at a, a baseload product that's relatively hedged to, to a really good level, that's sub fifty dollars for capacity energy, there's nothing in the marketplace today that can touch it. I had mentioned those fixed price energy deals from Evergy and from NextTerra and those things we used to do. If we were to go out to NextTerra and say, I want a seven by twenty-four, ten-year, just energy product with no capacity, it would be fifty-five, sixty dollars just for the energy. So the GRDA energy plus the ECA is around thirty dollars. And then when you throw in the capacity, it gets to around forty-five or forty-six dollars. That's for capacity and energy.
Right.
We would just go and get the energy, you're talking fifty-five or sixty dollars today.
Which we're, we're over on capacity currently. So we, you know, with what we have, we can afford to, to lose the fifty percent on solar or whatever it ends up being. If we were to choose to expand that way. Now, future growth, I understand as well, but.
Yep.
So when we, when Winter Storm Yuri hit and we were running our generators, were we running our generators to, because we, we were asked to run them to supply to the grid? Or were we, were we, we were, we were running Baldwin when that happened?
We ran Baldwin sitting.
What, why wasn't GRDA cheaper?
I don't even think you could get it at that point.
There's the other problem. So even when we needed GRDA the most and they're hedging market, we couldn't use them.
So GRDA, so it, you're, you're paying for that energy. The problem is not having the gas hedge. You were paying six, seven, eight hundred dollars from GRDA. The market was four thousand. You're paying seven hundred through, eight hundred, nine hundred through GRDA. So it was coming, just at a higher price. When, when Winter Storm Yuri hit, it was literally, um, there was load shed events in SPP, which is the first time it happened in sixty-seven. So anything that was registered, anything that was behind the meter that was not registered, which Baldwin has a combination of both, was called upon to help supply reliability to the entire grid. That's really, so it was a combination of, oh crap, uh, we're shedding load. If you've got anything that we know about or that we don't know about, turn it on to help support the grid.
Essentially, we are insulating ourselves from the default gas price.
Yes. Because you guys were mainly running your, you were running natural gas, you were running all diesel. All diesel, yeah. So you were capped at that two fifty or two seventy, whatever that might, and you're actually probably injecting energy into the market. But again, if, if you were to ask me, um, what my preference would be, it'd be somewhere between that thirty to forty percent of baseload. Just because I have no idea what power prices are going to do ten or fifteen, twenty years from now. But I would lean more on the side of caution than more on the side of risk. If it were me, if it were me. But that's just my opinion and then my opinion only.
So again, how much solar then would you recommend?
So you have what, three to, was it three to four percent right now with your community?
One megawatt.
So.
I think it's no more than five.
Fifteen percent. Capacity factor, somewhere around there.
Are you going, are you going base or peak?
I'm just like total annual energy that you're getting from it.
Yep.
So if it's fifteen percent capacity factor, one megawatt, you're at three to four percent with your existing community solar. We had you earmarked for three megawatts, whether it's large scale or community, it's really up to you all. That would be like another, um, twenty percent. So then you're close to that twenty-five percent, which is a reasonable number. It's not completely outlandish, you know, because we're recommending anywhere from fifteen to twenty to the folks that are participating in this large-scale solar project. So by having, um, then you've got federal hydro represents about six and you've got wind that represents another sixteen. So that's a night and then fifteen to twenty percent market exposure, depending on when the wind is blowing and when the, uh, the sun is shining. So.
What you just outlined was GRDA at two, it sounded like.
What's that?
You're, what you, what you just went through with the increased solar to fifteen percent?
Yes, sir.
That would be GRDA at two megawatts, not one megawatt.
GRDA two, uh, GRDA one, I, I could go back and, I mean, I could do the math there pretty quick, but, um.
Did that scare you?
It's.
Yeah, you already said it did.
It scares me a little bit. It, it does, it does scare me a little bit. I'll be honest, because we've kind of got one bite at the, at the GRDA extension apple. I don't know if they would be willing to allow more. And it's, it's, like I said, it's been one of those products that if you look at over the last twenty years, hasn't been the cheapest priced, hasn't been the highest price. It's been just stable, right in the middle. And when you're running a municipality or something, you, you want rate stability. That's more important than saving, you know, a penny a kilowatt hour, a half a penny a kilowatt, in my mind. But again, I'm just the guy that works at KMEA and you guys are the ones that are in the city.
On the, on the Pratt solar to change gears, is there a, a maximum or minimum? Can you do one, two or three on that?
Anything.
Anything you want.
Yep. Anything you want. So if you wanted, yeah, say you want one or a half a megawatt or a quarter megawatt.
It is for a PPA for thirty years, no matter what.
Yes, sir. And the reason why we did the thirty-year, when we were negotiating with them, they did have a twenty-year option. They, uh, they, they, they still, uh, kept the twenty-year option. But then they, in part of the negotiation, they said that if we keep the REX, we're going to lower the thirty-year PPA by like six dollars. And then the twenty-year PPA by like four. And we're planning on, with this particular project, we're planning on doing a prepay, which essentially you go to a financial market and you, um, it, it's the arbitrage between taxable and non-taxable bonds. We've, we've done it with our Dogwood, uh, natural gas plant. We plan to do the same thing with this, um, large-scale solar project. So when you do that, you're able to take another eight to ten percent off of the PPA price. And so then you're talking about like forty-five, forty-six dollars a megawatt hour for peaking power. So then you're getting into, and if you were to ask me today, what I think peaking power is going to do ten or fifteen years from now? There's so many moving parts, but typically things get more expensive over time. So if you were to lock in something at forty-six dollars long-term, if we're wrong, we're not going to be wrong by much. Because it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be fifteen dollars a megawatt hour. It, it's more, it has more propensity to go to a hundred dollars a megawatt hour than it does to go to ten or fifteen. So if we're wrong, we're not going to be wrong by much. And you're going to have that rate stabilization for that portion. Whether you do community or whether you do large-scale solar, you'll have that rate stabilization for that peaking power for a long time.
They're, they are going to keep the REX on it, though, I think you said.
They're keeping their REX. That was part of the negotiation piece. Yeah.
We're either twenty or thirty.
Both.
So how long was this contract that's coming up? How long do we have this GRDA contract?
Thirty, wasn't it? Twenty-five.
It was twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. And, um, if I understand it correctly, the rate they're proposing for another twenty-five years is slightly less than what our current PPA is, that correct?
No. So it's, it's one of those things where.
It's about the same. I mean.
It's about, it's about the same. It's about the same. They're adding more, um, generation to their fleet. When you buy insurance, which we're essentially signing up for someone else to supply the energy or buy an insurance, they're taking on a lot of the risk. So you pay, you know, over time, as they add on more resources, it can incrementally get a little more expensive if they add like a really expensive combined cycle plant. But it's going to be one of those things where it's, it's like this, it's not this.
Right.
So it'll just be, as they add more resources into their, excuse me, into their portfolio to stabilize their wholesale rates, it's going to be more like this. And that's the story. If you look at it over the last twenty years, it's been like this. Outside of Winter Storm Yuri, which went up, I think their blended price was maybe fifty-eight or sixty dollars for that one year when you factor in that blip. But for the most part, it's been between forty and fifty dollars.
Alright, so they're going to spend the next twenty-five years doing the same thing, trying to manage it, new forms of technology, energy. So, you know, we always hear, and, and the risk is things could go crazy and inflation and everything costs more and you're going to pay way more. You know, when this thing comes around and it just doesn't always turn out that way. And I think the example is, is the last contract didn't produce a huge spike in this next one. So it's irrelevant about when you take it or not. It's just, I think what we're thinking about is energy costs. You know, there's going to be a lot of effort into minimizing energy costs, whether it's solar, new forms of energy. Whatever it is, the, the drive is downward for everybody because we're consuming more. We have to do something or no one's going to be able to afford any of it, right? So because of the consumption is going to go way up, you better get better at it or, or we're going to press ourselves out of the market.
But over the last thirty years in this contract with GRDA, did, did it stay even or were they passing that inflation?
No. If we look back, looking back at our actual costs, it was, it was up, you know. As it costs them more, they pass that along to their customers. Now, they have a big customer base, so we got the percentage increase everybody else got.
Right.
If you look at the, the history of the, of the GRDA, when we got into that, power prices were relatively stable. And then, and I want to say it was around the two thousand five to ten, power prices got really crazy, like a hundred dollars a megawatt hour for extended period of time. And, um, GRDA was in the money considerably at that point. And then we got, and then it was, that was the story till about two thousand thirteen, we got in the integrated marketplace. And then we're all sharing everyone's resources. Power prices went down, natural gas fracking happened, right? And then power prices were cheap for, for a long time. So I guess the point is, is there's going to be times in any contract that you do where you're going to be in the money and times you're going to be out of the money. So you're just looking at what portion do I want to stabilize rates at or with GRDA? You know, you're relatively stabilizing their rates. I know their PCA can go up and down. But when you look at the history of the last twenty years, it's been relatively stable. And so it's what portion do, do I want to stabilize and what portion do I, do I want to risk? Knowing that whatever you do i- is going to be wrong fifty percent of the time. It just is.
So I don't know if you have an opinion on this. I know we've talked about it quite a bit, but solar storage technology is really kind of the next big thing. And at some point, that's going to become base power, right? If you can store it and it's sitting in a battery, um, it's available at any time. I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm thinking down the road where it's cost effective enough to do that. So those are the things we think about when we sign these base power contracts at a fixed level. We're not going to have the ability to participate in, except as we grow, right? And maybe add, but as I think Corey said, we're already, you know, four megawatts above our growth factor. So it's going to be a while before we'd ever get to that.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. So this, uh, particular project in Pratt County actually comes with a storage option, uh, battery storage option. So that is something that's kind of a, um, an ancillary benefit, if you will. It's not economical today. It's like, I think it's around twelve or thirteen dollars a KW a month in order to, to build that, which the market today to put in, um, like a new combined cycle or a new diesel or something like that would be in that seven to ten dollar KW a month range. And you get very little energy out of the battery. Not to say that it's not going to be a technology you can use in the future, but today it's just, it's kind of like when, uh, plasma TVs came out. You know, the people at the bottom of twenty-three hundred dollars, they were like, oh, this is awesome. And then two years later, they were four hundred dollars. I don't know if we're going to get there with battery, uh, storage. It'll, it will probably decline as technology gets better. But there is an option to do that. It's a hundred, I believe it's a hundred megawatt battery storage. And we would have our pro-rata share of that, which would be, I don't know, fifty, sixty megawatts of that. But the numbers just aren't there. But when they are, that's something that we can add on to that existing site and you all could participate in if that was something that you wanted to do.
It's not a fixed, it'd be an add-on at a later date and it's not a fixed rate.
Could be. So it's, it's one of those things where as technology changes, increases, gets better, you say, okay, if it's twelve dollars a KW a month to build this out now, which the market is seven or eight, doesn't make sense. But as technology increases and gets better and gets more competitive with the market, then you can say, okay, let's look at adding this on and then arbitraging, you know, storing the solar at, at, uh, at night and injecting it during the day through the battery and getting those, those high prices. So those are things that you'd have the option to do through this project. I didn't mention it just because we're just, um, trying to get people to sign on for the, that's just like an ancillary benefit if the market were to change four or five years from now.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
We'd like to hear Jeff's take on any of this, any of this. Got anything you want to add, Jeff?
No, um, not really. Um, once we got the numbers, you know, kind of dialed down there on Friday, it appears to me that if we're talking, I'm with Neil, I think, I don't think we should go below at least a meg and a half on the GRDA. I think that would be minimal. As far as the solar, if, if the numbers are, are close, you know, um, to me, Neil's wording for this was it's the easy button to do the Pratt project. You don't have to do anything in-house. You know what your price is going to be. You're not open to, um, some of the what-ifs. And I know the big ONM contract that one of the companies has, has, uh, has proposed, um, kind of mitigates some of that. Um, so I'm okay as long as we know, you know, that the, the numbers are fairly similar, whether we do a, a community or a large scale. Because that's what I was seeing, was if it wasn't going to make a huge difference one way or the other.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes. The last thing I just wanted to clarify.
I knew it.
It needs to be said. We need to, we need to make sure we all understand this.
I noticed you were.
One more thing. Not so fast. So I just want to kind of summarize and make sure that I understand it correctly. I mean, currently we have no municipal-owned solar. We don't own it. We are, it's a, it's a PPA. With an option to, but we, we don't own it yet. So we really don't have any municipal solar. It's on our municipal property. That's why we call it municipal. But we're not owning it. So it's a different, right, different dynamic. We talked about GRDA quite a bit. It expires Q one twenty-six.
April thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Yes, sir.
In a Q one. And, um, so I guess we're talking about decisions need to be made. So my understanding was absolutely the Pratt decision needs to be made at the next council meeting.
Correct.
Not necessarily the GRDA until.
Correct. We're gonna.
Early in, in twenty-five.
Q one and twenty twenty-five. We look to have that wrapped up.
Right. So what I think we're looking at is, um, the Pratt decision's kind of on its own. Doesn't mean if you don't do Pratt that you don't want to do solar, because I think we had, you know, wasn't there another, didn't, uh, Evergy come in?
Evergy, yeah, the community.
Oh, that was the community solar.
That was the community. So, so we could still do solar, um, two different ways, right? Municipal, um, PPA, um, I guess that would be the only one, right? We could still do it either through a PPA from KMEA or we would, we could build and own.
Correct. Or you could do a PPA community.
Right. Yeah. So, so I just want to make sure we understand that the decision on Pratt isn't a decision on whether we want to do solar and what the size of the GRDA extension needs to be. That's, we have a little bit more time to figure that piece out.
Yep. Yeah. Because when you, when you look at, um, uh, you know, volumes of, you know, four and five megawatts of solar, it seems like, um, a lot, but you're only getting it twenty-five, twenty-six percent of the time. So when you run the calculations, much less energy than your, than your GRDA allocation. But you're getting them during the times when prices are generally the highest.
Right.
It's a good thing.
Yeah. And so that's, that's the point that I was going to make is that, you know, you're, you're getting your solar during the peak times when energy's the most. But when, let's say on a hot July night, you're, you're, you know, you're buying at nighttime, if you're using the open market and that's usually lower, a lot lower.
Can be. Yeah, it can be. It can be. Um, and then there's times when, yeah, coal unit trips and then prices go to three hundred, four hundred mile. It just, it all, again, it, it just is a matter of do, in order to get the lowest rates, it generally means you're taking on more market risk. And I kind of, I'm old school. I just kind of like that, that rate stabilization. I own them paying maybe a little bit more than my neighbor, but if crap hits the fan, I'm covered.
So what's the, so how much, uh, megawatts do you guys have allocated to KMEA? Eighty? Is that what you said?
For the NINUS call? Uh, eight, yes, sir. Well, we, we've got up to ninety and we've got probably, um, about eighty subscribed.
You have eighty megawatts essentially sold.
Yes.
So you have ten remaining. So you have ten remaining. So hypothetically, what's the deal with the deadline, I guess, since it's not even built yet?
Yeah, that's a good question, oh, yeah, no, good question. So when, um, we've had many discussions with the developer on, yeah, why, why the timeline of this thing isn't gonna be? So in order to procure all the solar panels, and we're talking about thousands of acres that this, um, two hundred megawatt solar farm is gonna go on, they have to, um, have all of the contracts secured before they can go and secure the inverters, um, you know, the, the panels, all these things. And then once they get the labor to do it, it's probably gonna take a year, year and a half project. So they have to get everything in place to try to hit that, cause we're, we're already upon twenty twenty-five. So you're talking about a late twenty twenty-six is when they're looking to go COD. So to get everything into place and to finalize with their, uh, financial institutions, they need everything buttoned up by like Q one of twenty twenty-five.
So I guess what I'm getting at, though, is we're, we're talking three megawatts out of the, out of the one and a half percent. If, let's say we decide not to go with the Pratt right now, and in sixty days, we say, oh crap, we messed up, we wanna go with the Pratt. Are they really gonna say no to sell more energy?
Well, so, so KMEA, so that right now they've got, uh, twenty-five, Keppco is in for twenty-five, we have up to ninety. Um, and then they've got a third off-taker that is supposed to sign on the next sixty days, take the remainder. So whatever the difference is between what KMEA hands to them on December thirty-first and what Keppco does, this other entity we're being told is gonna take the remainder. So once that happens, the door is closed.
Okay.
Why, why would they take an unknown number if they have, why wouldn't they just buy what they need right now? Why, why wait and see what's left and then buy that? Doesn't make sense.
Well, they're doing, they're doing us a favor, because we, the way that KMEA operates, since we're project-based, we, we have an idea, right, of what our members, but just like we had you guys there, Mark, for three, and then you, you are gonna need, somewhere between zero and three is what you're gonna do. We have a lot of cities just like you. So it, it's kinda when you go to the developer and you say, you know, affirm ninety, and it's like, sorry, we can't deliver a firm ninety, cause we have municipalities that make their own autonomous decisions. And so, and so we, we, we deal in ranges. So ours was like somewhere between seventy-five and ninety is what we feel really comfortable to. And then they're marketing the remainder, and, yeah.
So a company that would buy the remainder like that is somebody like Evergy, that can turn around a reason?
Or, or maybe a, a big, uh, big public utility, you never know.
Yeah.
Never know, it could be.
Yes.
Yeah.
You feel good?
I do.
But yes, so the, so you, you're exactly right, sir, on the, on the timeline. So shot clock on the Nenasko flats, and then GRDA is sometime at the end of Q one, we'll, we'll have that kinda honed in. But anywhere between, I mean, one point seven five or two, I feel good about, but anything lower than that, it kinda scares me. Even though you have generate, it just scares me, because I've been in this, been, been in this arena for twenty-five years, and it, these last five years, it's really volatile, and it scares me of where power prices can go. And, and having that, uh, you know, that, that foundation there just gives me some security as your power supply manager.
Understand that.
I think that's all the questions I have.
For Neil, but I, I, I think it's important that we validated that the Pratt decision needs to be made, not necessarily the solar decision. I think we need to talk about, is there another, I mean, do we even have a path to a municipal solar? We need to talk about that, you know, where, what are our options, you know? Because if we have to make that Pratt decision, we need to understand if, if a municipal solar option is actually viable. And I'm, you know, I think that we need to have a discussion.
Yep, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I can, I can start this off.
Before we jump into that, can I ask one real quick question? The, it's, it is related, but I, if, basically what our insurance policy is, for, for solar, or if we are going, going to the market, basically not buying base from GRDA. Our ins- our big insurance policy is, is balled in our investment and our generators' investment and all that. Is there a way to expand our storage of natural gas, to where we can lock in a price and expand our natural gas storage, to where that's not a volatility as well, to where we're not at the mercy of the natural gas market? I mean, is that something that we could roll into that conversation as well?
And that's how they're hedging, you're talking about.
We hedge our own, yeah, this build a natural gas silo of sorts, you know, where you, you lock in the price of the
Well, I mean, you can put tanks on, oh.
I'm asking, you know, if, that would be a way to make that less risky, if you see a good price on natural gas and buy it up and store it.
Jeff, you wanna step up and talk?
I think the infrastructure on that would probably be a large number.
I would imagine.
I think the backstop, backstop to the high natural gas pricing would be your diesel. We can run those units, all, all four units of the new plant will run on diesel, so.
And natural gas, right?
Well, two of them will run on both, two of them are only, the two newer ones are only diesel.
Okay.
So say you get a spike in the natural gas, but we still need to generate, um, we, we can go on diesel. And we have a lot of storage of that, and, you know, we try to buy it at lowest times, so, um, I think that
So we have, yeah, I mean, so you could hedge diesel.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking back to Yuri, and I think Glenn, you, you've talked about this a lot, about how every day that, that diesel or natural, that, it was the diesel truck would show up and refill all of our tanks, and the price stayed relatively the same, and you were kinda shocked by that. Well, I mean, so if we had another winter storm, Yuri, I mean, do we, since we bought the other generators and we've added those, have we also added more diesel storage to where it wouldn't necessarily be refilling every day if we had to run all day, every day?
So we haven't added the amount of storage we have, but I have increased the amount I store.
Okay.
There's more in those tanks right now than there's ever been.
How many, how many days could you run with what you have in those tanks?
Right now, all four units, I think we could run about eighty-four hours.
Wow.
That's the number I track.
So you have a locked-in price right there for
Three days.
Three, and then one, three days, yeah.
So do we, do we have data on how diesel tracks with natural gas? I mean, do they, they track similarly, are they completely unrelated? So when you see a natural gas spike, diesel's not gonna spike, and vice versa?
They're fairly unrelated, yes. Usually diesel is more stable than, than the natural gas.
Remember what happened to the natural gas, that, that, it, it got cut off coming from Texas, its source, but diesel was stored all around. So you don't have that bottleneck on there.
Right, yep.
It's, it's stored all.
Correct.
So that's the difference, and that won't really track together.
So back to the question you were gonna
Yeah, sorry, I wanted to answer that first.
No, that's a good, I mean, it sounds like we've got a little bit of hedge going
Yeah.
Already.
Yep.
Yeah, so we've talked about community solar a lot in finance committee. Talked about numerous locations that we have, we've tried looking at city-owned property, um, I mean, and then purchasing some property. We don't have a price on the purchased property, but the property that we've kinda identified that would be good for this would be on the south end of Baldwin, which would be close to our power plant. So, yeah, I mean, and, and factoring in all those, based on the numbers that we've ran, the numbers have been very similar to the Pratt project, um, on the community solar. Um, I, I personally, and I'll just say my opinion, I think if we do community solar, I, I think we are, we are making a decision as a city for a long term, and we need a plan for that decision for a long term. So trying to piecemeal it with a cemetery, or with a, the lake property, doesn't make much sense to me. It makes more sense to go ahead and make the investment in the property that the solar panels will sit on that can afford growth for future, because you are making that decision to go ahead and move more into that realm. So that's my opinion, but
I, I, I don't disagree, but the, the question still remains, if we have to make a decision, um, next Tuesday, um, and you still don't have any land locked up at a price, I mean, it's a big unknown.
Correct.
And then you say no to Pratt, well, really what that's gonna lock you into then is either doing smaller solar at one of the city-owned sites, and or just more GRDA, or actually both.
Correct.
Right, so.
You are making a decision without making the decision, kind of. I mean, you're, you're, you're minimizing your decision points, which is narrowing down your decisions. Cause and then your GRDA or community solar at that point. That's how I'm viewing it, I guess. Because by making a, if, if the decision by the council is to not go with Pratt, I mean, we've only talked about three, three options, community solar, Pratt, or GRDA. Now you're down to community solar or GRDA. So now you gotta start looking at the costs related to that, and we've ran scenarios, I think the council has the spreadsheets on all that to run those scenarios on what land acquisition costs would be. Um, and Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a computer in front of you, but, um, at even at, you know, fifteen thousand dollars an acre, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars an acre, we're still about the same price as what we're essentially saying for the Pratt.
Yeah, if you're looking at the piece of ground, I think you're talking about, you know, you're around nine hundred thousand on the high side, six hundred down the low side or somewhere in there. So that does add to the cost of the project, so.
Remind me, we're, we're similar to Pratt in the first twenty years, or is that total life of the Pratt contract?
Well, it depends, it depends on a lot of things. It depends on, uh, you know, if you're in that thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, you know, range of, of, uh, you know, government kickbacks, the tax credits, yeah.
Good point.
So in that, there's a lot of unanswered questions there, too, so you can, I mean, you kinda gotta
But even at the thirty percent on a thirty-year amortization, similar to the Pratt, we are still cheaper than
Well, with the land acquisition, it was about the same on the thirty.
No, I think it was cheaper.
Well, now if you go five megawatts, it was cheaper, I think, but three megawatts, I think it was pretty close, if I remember right.
Depending on the industry, it's cost of the land, capacity charge, recs, all those vary.
And that's where we'll have to just run the numbers, I mean, each of us have that worksheet, but I don't know, I mean, it's a big decision that everybody has next, next week to make. But again, I don't see it as a, to me, I guess, it is a big decision, but it's not, cause we have two options in front of us with very similar costs in the same, the, the same, um, I guess, output, the same source of energy that we would. I mean, so to me, then, as I'm just going through my thinking processes, now it comes down to, do we wanna control it behind our meter more, or do we want somebody else to control it? And that, that's just my thinking, and that's how I
So the one contract that we saw, where they had the ONM built in, right, and we saw that rate, and we, we thought that when we ran our numbers at that rate would work pretty well. I mean, we, it's been mentioned, I don't remember who said it, but the, the, the ONM, that that particular contract that we were looking at takes away a lot of the unknowns, but doesn't it take care of all of them? If you have catastrophe coverage built in, you have maintenance, you have a contract that's consistent over a term, doesn't that answer all of your risk? Isn't that what having that type of a service is?
I mean, that's how I see it, yeah.
So, so I, I mean, I feel like that's one of those ones where we're kind of uncomfortable being like, oh, I don't know. But I feel like if you, if you have a contract, and we looked at it, we looked at it, it was a long-term contract, twenty-year, I think, at least, wasn't it over, wasn't it twenty or more?
It was twenty years, I think.
Right, it was locked in, twenty-year, had cat coverage built in, and they maintained it.
The variable's that twenty to thirty-five, but at that point, your bond's covered and
Bond's covered after twenty, yeah. So I, I don't really see a reason to do a PPA. So your question really is GRDA versus, in my, in my mind, GRDA versus a bonded municipal project.
See, I guess mine is how mu- is not GRDA or, it's how much of GRDA and.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think that, that's the
But there's another variable there.
What?
Well, when we looked at three versus five, if you had five, I don't know that you would need GRDA. That would still get you your fifty percent of, of base.
No.
I mean, not based on what I heard.
There's no base in solar.
It's all variable.
So the only, the only base you have is GRDA and the market.
I know, but the word, I'm having a hard time with the word base.
Base means
No, I don't understand what it means, I'm having a, I'm having a hard time with how we're defining it. If you have five megawatts of solar and you need two and a half megawatts of base, you're gonna get two and a half megawatts of base out of a five megawatt solar field.
Except at night.
Except at night, you're buying off the market.
Right, which is what I just said.
I know.
It's either GRDA or the market. Or when it gets, when it gets really hot at our peak days in the winter, and, you know, cloudy days in summer where it's hot, um, solar's not gonna be producing.
To, to me, if you go from three to five solar, you, you are, in a, in a way, taking care of your base. I mean, if you, I mean, we can sit here and listen about how GRDA and how they're flat over a long term. Well, if you, if you take nighttime energy cost over a long term, it's gonna be flat, too. So that's why I'm having a hard time saying the word base, as if it's like this really strong anchor point, the base comes with a PCA as well.
Yeah, Jeff, you have anything to add to that? Cause I, I think we, I mean, I, I think we decided that we, you couldn't go all, all solar and, and, and have reliable, and, and not be exposed to the market in a big way.
Yeah, like, like he talked about, it's the overnight hours that you, that you would be exposed to. And right now, you're correct, overnight hours are cheap to sometimes negative. Will that be that way ten years from now, or five years from now? I don't know if I would wanna make that bet. Um, to me, that's why I think we need to really have some baseload around the clock. Like I said, at, at one time, Glenn and I were talking that, that one percent made sense, you know, and to use, you know, the market to, to, uh, to fill in, you know, the rest of that, and, you know, I'd say anywhere from one to two. I know Neil was closer to two, but, um
But my issue with that is that that company, GRDA, is, is fifty percent natural gas, volatile natural gas, they got volatility elsewhere, they're gonna pass that PCA on. What is the difference between a, 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 a base rate with a PCA or the open market?
Well, the difference I see is GRDA over the last twenty-five years has been very stable. The market over the last twenty-five years has not been very stable. It's been quite the opposite in the last five years, with all of the renewables that are out now, that is making the dayhead and real-time market way more volatile than it used to be.
It's, and I think the, the part that I have a hard time with is that PCA, because it kinda hides. It kinda hides that volatility a little bit, because it's, oh, look, we've been, we've been five, five cents a kilowatt hour, you know, this whole time, but you haven't been, you've been passing on a separate cost.
But it has been stable even with the PCA.
Relative.
All-in price has been stable. I'm sorry, I didn't mean
Relative to the market, right, so it hasn't been completely stable, it's fluctuated.
Right.
You're saying relative to the market pricing, it's a much smaller ripple?
Right, twenty-one was the outlier, it, it was not.
Right.
And even then, we're talking, what would that be, twenty percent? Or less?
I'm not, I'm not saying one or the other, I'm just, I'm just trying to, the, the, the terms with, with the base and it being consistent, no-risk type thing is just, I'm having a hard time with, because if you replace three megawatts, let's say, okay, let's say you go down to, let's say you go down to a half megawatt of, of GRDA, and, and two and a half are coming from solar during the day, and then you're in the open market at night, then your exposure really isn't two and a half megawatts of risk, it's, 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 you have your daytime hours where that's not the same a hundred percent risk. And, and your lower-cost opportunities at night don't make that the same risk either over a long term. So for me, you're not really risking two and a half megawatts, you're risking somewhere a percentage of that.
Another thing that just came to my head right now is you have, you know, typically the overnight hours are, are cheap or negative, um, but not always. Um, high-use times, extreme cold, extreme heat, it is definitely not under GRDA pricing even throughout the night. So there's some days there that, that it, that the base, the GRDA product, product would protect you some, too, versus the market.
Yeah.
I think your scenario in all likelihood would work, because
Do you wanna sleep at night?
That's the problem.
I get it, I know, I know.
Over the long haul, the spot market
I'm just stretching it out a little bit to see what we, you know, it, and you also have your generation there, too, that, that
Yeah, so there's gonna be a number that you have to say, well, this is, it's a spot markets above that, then I need to run.
And I'm not arguing zero GRDA, I'm, I think I'm arguing on the lesser side of what our range is.
Yeah.
If we were talking the GRDA was a five-year term If we were talking that GRDA was a five-year term and then five years from now we reevaluate, I think I'd be more towards.
Right. It makes it easy.
Right. Yeah, let's, let's, let's take a gamble for a few years and see if we can take advantage of some of that lower pricing. But I don't know that you want to do that. I don't know.
Cause you're stuck.
Right.
I think, I mean, where I sit now, I, I appreciate his conservativeness on it a little bit, you know, I do. Cause he has our community to look out for and others. I think I could get a little riskier, but probably not as far as Corey's risk.
I haven't said my number yet.
I have a feeling where your number is. Without saying it, you've said it. I think for me, my comfort level would be around that one and a half, uh, if we did some community solar. I mean, I could go a little riskier than one point seven five, cause to me, I mean, you know, it's, it's neither here nor there on that. But that's where I sit right now.
We have an investment in these generators and we keep adding on to our generation. And I just, I feel like what's the point of it if we aren't able to expose ourselves a little bit more to the market? So you're one and a half, I'm one.
Well, if yours is a negotiation, I would have started higher.
It's not a negotiation. I'm, I'm actually the only one of us that gets to vote.
I know.
I know.
And that's the part we don't have to decide until, until March. I mean, that's the conversation we need to keep having, right?
Yeah, we have time.
The conversation, I think you said it pretty well, is do you want to have municipal solar or a PPA solar? And that's the Pratt decision. And then the numbers that Glenn has provided kind of show you the comparison based on some variables. So those variables we have to lock down, but then it shows you the comparable cost between so, solar PPA from, you know, the Pratt project versus what our build and, and own would be. Good discussion.
Any other comments? Ooh, any other comments or questions? Before we adjourn the work session? All right. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. We are adjourned.